Well, didn't get as bad as it could have gotten.
True.
Well, that's true. Well, yeah, I don't know if that's gonna create us.
Yeah, it could change.
It was about the slowest ride I ever had coming to Arizona.
You know, I was, uh.
I was, I was flying.
Okay.
I mean, and I put a, I don't know, half, two thirds of a pallet of softener salt in the back of my truck and I had lots of slush that I applied.
It was.
Fish down.
Yeah.
I don't have that far to drive, uh, but you know, it was, uh, it was certainly good. Two inches of slush, I think, on the road, maybe more.
Yeah.
Really? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was backed up from that side where they got taken off of the D door. It was just icy and wet.
Really?
No stuff.
Oh, we had.
Our blouse were out. They might have already hit.
Right in yours or that one area. Um, but, uh, yeah, I don't know what it's supposed to do. I had someone tell me yesterday that they're predicting ten inches of snow. That rag was.
Well, the rain got last night.
We had almost nine.
I know it would have been cold if I'm correct.
In poll session?
Yeah.
So, all right, well, you guys, we're gonna record and no decision was made.
Yep.
Okay. And then we're gonna go back to, can I go see Nick?
Yeah, if he has questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta have that to. In show.
He smell my water.
Okay. When is your county email? Go on.
So this is what I got.
Yeah, that's what else is done.
Plus, we won't have anything to get it on. I don't know how to, I don't know how to log in.
I'll work out, or else you guys can pour it.
I don't think what the hell my cellphone email is. Cause my phone don't work anymore. My cellphone's not in Gmail. In case you had gmail dot com. Cellphone still have Gmail. You could go on there. Sometime I'd set up. I didn't do it.
Right.
Oh, I think Jenna's shit worked.
All right. Well, gentlemen.
Thanks, Dad.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a pleasure.
Oh, yeah.
We'll see you again.
Maybe not here.
I'll check you guys hand too, so.
Yeah.
But we'll see another four as well, two and four.
You don't have to sign it yet, but take, you take a look at the, the numbers because it's not in the computer.
Oh, these are next, okay.
It's next. Before you.
It's gonna be better.
Yep, there is it.
Bye.
Back to roll, cash on hand. I'm letting me chat in the middle. Kinda, kinda, kinda hard to approve it if you can't see it.
Yeah, I was just gonna write it. But that is. It's like, it's like.
Right, right. You're not.
The only one you have to different would be next.
Yeah, everything else is thumbs over, right?
Yep.
I moved that we approved the cash on hand for December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Do I have a second to that motion?
No, second by Casey.
Any discussion on, uh, cash on hand? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. I'll pass you two at a time arguments.
If you sign your name online, good for. Whatever, they can. I'll be Donny. Still Kyle.
Well, yeah, and before he pulls out the business, I just wanna say, Donny, and you know, it's been a pleasure. Sitting beside you and working with you for guys for years and.
You do it a lot.
There you go.
Thank you for all the years.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're gonna miss you. Especially that scruffy old beard.
Yep. Don't worry. Some Tuesday I'll be ice fishing. I'll send you picture tracks.
You already sent me one.
Yes, I did.
But it wasn't fishing.
Did you like that one?
Yeah.
That was tasty.
I liked it.
Did it bite you?
I hurt clear leg. Two foot of water on shore. Nice big crappie and perch.
Really?
Crappies and perch. Anything else? We conclude the business for twenty twenty two.
And we, we conclude the twenty twenty two business.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Los. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
You.
Los.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Good luck.
Good pleasure.
It's been.
Yeah, really. Yeah. Yeah, good pleasure. Good luck. Yeah, miss you too. Yeah.
Donny.
Good luck. Yeah. Donny, good luck. To you, Gail.
Oh, bro. Mr. Gail. Can we take a break before we start this? Do you want to?
Yeah.
Let's take a break before we start.
Yeah.
You take my name, or you get it?
No, you can take it. You can take it.
Keep it until next time you're running. It happens. I think it's over. Yeah. We got COVID, in case you wanna eat.
Okay.
You wanna eat that cookie?
Sure.
Carter, can you talk? Let's test her out here.
I, I don't have much of a voice, but can you hear me?
Yep, that was plenty loud. Try, say something now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
It's about perfect.
Okay. We'll see if my voice lasts the morning.
You can, yeah, hopefully it won't be too bad here, um.
One's for yes, two for no.
Josh. You're crystal clear in the back of the room, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk very loud. The owl projects quite a bit, so.
Okay.
Do you want video allowed if, um, if I do that show on my computer and I usually have it minimized, so I wouldn't probably see anyway.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's not up on the screen.
Oh, um, and this will be put on, um, online later on and stuff too, so I guess it's up to you, but otherwise I think your initials is good enough.
Okay.
You, I mean, if you're all dressed up sitting at home, then.
Yeah. Wore a nice shirt in the office here.
Let me see if I can adjust the settings again then. It works. Um, oh, but.
Sorry, I couldn't be there today.
How's that?
It looks like sidewalks are just wet. If you look at the brick, see I spilled. Just a little weird.
You see me?
Um, no, did you turn your camera on?
Yep.
Do you see yourself on your side?
I do, yep.
I just see your initials here. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
I might have that there.
And just. I just turned it off and on again.
Now you're visible there.
Okay.
Hello. How's the ice down there?
Oh, I think it's mostly just water right now. But Kaylee went to work. Of course, she only just goes across town, but.
Well, when I, when I drove in, there's some pretty good slush. I was, um.
That's what it looks like.
Well, it, and it was, it was slick underneath it too. I was, um, sliding and fishtailing a little bit even with my truck and it's what a pallet of salt back to, so. I was trying to, tried to be prepared, but it was not real pretty roads.
Hi, Tammy.
Carter.
Here, Tammy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you feeling?
Oh, feeling all right. My voice is a little rough, but. Sorry I couldn't be there today.
Uh, no, I know how you feel, um, when I. Right before election, um, or right before. The election, uh, my in-laws got COVID and ended up in the hospital. My father. Hey, but I couldn't have a party or anything because we were in quarantine, so. We missed all that. And then my very first election, um, the Thursday before I. So I didn't have, it was horrible. So I understand how you're feeling.
Yeah, hopefully by the end of the week here, I can at least get in on one of the budget meetings, but.
Yeah, well, and we can always have you. On the phone too. I don't know if you need to be, you know, it's happened to you, but we can always. If you're not able to tomorrow.
No. I didn't have his video on until now. He, he said he was all dressed up, so he wanted to represent.
Do you, do you wanna put it up on the screen or?
We probably could. I don't know. I think that's HDMI. I'd have to talk to Derek on that. We, we could potentially figure that out here maybe after we get started on. So maybe.
You have a what?
My speaker.
I think for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
I just don't wanna sit.
Yeah, no, 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 you're fine. We can move them too. That's fine.
About that, then we could maybe put you up on the screen too.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know.
To get everything all tied together.
Stay in line, chair in my seat, so I can just put you where your spot was.
You don't, don't take my chair, Josh.
Door's locked, um.
I'm not there to fight you for it.
Get from there to the board table.
From where?
From there to the projector to the board table so we can have Carter. He's, he's all dressed up.
Yes, so.
We've got HDMI from this laptop over there already.
Okay, um.
But she is recording the video from this machine, so.
Well, that is, no, is that the same? Is that the same HDMI for the other owls?
They're not HDMI to the.
Yeah, that's USB, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's already hooked up to this for recording.
But there's an HDMI from here to the projector?
Yes.
Okay, um.
What do you accomplish?
Carter is all dressed up at home and we were trying to accomplish putting him on the screen so he could, everyone could.
So you could run an HDMI cable from your laptop over to the projector.
That's what I was asking about.
Uh.
Cause I have the adapter to go from USB C.
We don't have to if it's.
I think.
It's not a big deal.
We just gotta see if we got the cable for it. Morning. And if not, I can just. If not, I can have people come up just. And like, Phil and Chris, I don't know if they're coming in for stuff, but. You can figure stuff out that way. Do you wanna use that or not?
I don't think that's what we got for. It seems like we're too far, right?
To go down and back up, it would probably be too short. Josh, you wanna help here? That's.
Please?
Yeah. What's that?
Twenty five. Yeah.
In case soon. I'll play it. Um, you wanna help?
Thanks.
If you want to, it should plug in out there.
Yeah. You're much above the temperature. And that's it, but. There, you got it.
Which port does it?
I walked in the. That's only the one that's.
That's the only one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Yeah, so the way this works. Right. The, or you only need the laptop here, just plug into that one.
Yeah.
This one goes under Tammy's.
Okay.
Looked like.
Okay. So that's the one that's wired hardwired through?
Yeah, correct.
That makes it, well, we can settle for now, um. Carter, we'll have you up in a second.
Okay. Tomorrow.
Actually, I'll let you take most of this over the edge. I know I have the adapter in my binder here.
Good thing.
Bell, couple chairs.
Safety furthers. Good plug in. You're good. Uh, which in the service, maybe you don't have anybody that needs to get on the screen.
Press yourselves. Actually, that will.
Everything you do, you're gonna have to unplug every.
So that would show my screen. I wouldn't be able to fold my packet that way.
Unless you extend here.
Can you push that on the projector? Not show my screen.
Screen. So Carter's to your right.
Okay.
That's how you can. Which one's reported?
Say there.
Yeah. There you go.
See? Perfect. What a deal having two, two tech people in the same room.
I don't know about that.
Oh, only one or one and a half or? Carter, we got you on the projector.
Cool. I'm, I'm the real, I'm big time now.
You're bigger than all of us.
Just make sure. Things covered, so.
Whoa.
The chair fit you?
Little big.
Yeah, you got Carter on the screen now. He, he's all dressed up, so he wanted to say hi.
Is he dressed up? Let's see.
The screen. Oh, there you are.
Why?
Morning, Jack.
Well, I have a suit on. I wouldn't call you.
Well, it's just a, just a collared shirt.
Might be sitting there in shorts for all we know, cause you're.
My pajama pants.
Yeah. How you feeling this morning?
Oh, a lot better than yesterday. I came down with fever about a hundred and two yesterday and, and then, uh, it was gone this morning now, so. But, uh, back to normal temperature now, but, uh, so I'm feeling a lot better, but lost a lot of my voice.
Okay.
So. At least it was only a one day deal.
Yeah. Are you ready? We will call the. Back into session for twenty twenty three new business. First thing on the agenda, nomination for chairman.
I would nominate Rogers as chairman and Jeff Plath as vice chairman.
Do I have a second to that motion? I'll second it. Any discussions?
Um, I guess I've said it the last two, three years. I think there should be changes instead of.
That's fair.
Having the same people, chair and vice chair. We've had the same two individuals for the last four years. Um, I think there should be changes.
Last two years.
No, the last four years, we've had the same two individuals.
Well, yeah, they flipped.
The last three years.
Two. I've only been chairman two years.
Wow.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
No.
Nah.
We didn't hear you.
Muted.
Carter, can you hear us?
Carter? Nope, don't area.
Carter, you're muted on there.
Well, we lost him.
He, he back down, came back there. Can you hear, did you?
I was, I was. I'm, I'm sorry. You guys got out there for, for a minute. Um, what's that?
We're just taking a roll call, oh, a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you hear the, the, uh, motion?
Yes, I did. I, then it cut out.
Um, so I'm just asking for your vote.
Okay. Um, did we already do discussion?
I said a little bit. Did you hear that at all?
Well, I, I was saying, could we? Um, or what I wanted to bring up was, I, I also, I would agree with, if we wanna look into the future of, um, rotating. Who, who is chair, um, and through, through the years and changing that up year to year. I mean. Um, I would, I guess my, I have a counter proposal, but I don't know if that's. How that works.
This vote fails, then another nomination would need to be entertained.
Right, right now we have a second on the floor and we're voting.
I'm sorry, I missed some of that, so let's, yeah.
So you would vote yes or no?
No.
No.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion failed. I would call for a new nomination for chairman and vice chairman. The floor is open for nomination.
I would nominate, oh, go ahead.
Carter.
I would nominate, uh, Jack Plath. As chairman of the board and Kyle Stecker as vice chairman of the board.
I'd second that nomination.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
No. Motion carried, three to two. Can we switch to ours?
I'm going to, uh, I, I'm going to make the statement though. I'm, I'm going to not accept it. Because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have enough. I won't be, I've got some trips planned and I, and I don't feel like. To do it justice this year, so I am gonna respect, respectfully decline, uh, being chairman for this year.
Okay. Do we need to redo the nomination then?
We'll have to start all over. I would take nomination for chairman.
I would like to nominate Jack Plath as, as, or not Jack, uh, sorry, Roger as chairman and Kyle Stecker as vice chair.
I'll second that motion.
Have some discussion. Mr. Stecker, discussion.
I, I think there should be. I think there should be more changes than that.
Self-ovary.
There any other discussion?
Uh, I would like to see Roger and myself stay in leadership roles. We have seniority and. We know the ins and outs of the office and the, and what goes on and think we can do the best job for the time we have left as board members.
Well, that was my feeling that at least one of you should remain in, in those positions.
That's what we'll call it. It'd be. Yeah, in my opinion, it'd be nice if, for you two new ones to have one year and then. Have you guys step up to take roles as chairman and vice chairman.
So why didn't we do that the last four years? Ah, well, Donny was the vice chair the first year and then no one after that.
Well, I think you two have been kinda rotating in and out, so, um, I do agree that we do need someone that has experience as the chair to kinda stay that for, you know, at least the first year. Um, but we do need a new rotation to vice chair and, and that is why I nominated Kyle to vice chair. For the instance of being able to rotate out in the following years, to potentially have Kyle as chair and one of us, you know, newer guys as vice chair at that point. But to get the year started, I think we need someone that does have experience in the role and then, um, we can get Kyle up to speed as vice chair. And then move forward from there.
Do a roll call vote.
Stecker.
Can you repeat the motion on the floor?
Um, Wachter made the motion to nominate Roger Jerks as chairman and Kyle Stecker as vice chair. Okay, goodbye, Carter.
I would say yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
No. It passes. Think a long time? Long. I will say that the roll call. Vote is three to two and that the motion passes. So I accept it. For here. Okay. Things around here. Just dollar come out. Vote for that word. There's.
Underneath, underneath.
No.
Do I do that now?
Oh, really, there's pretty good, I feel like. So read on the front. Yep, there's latches that get pulled. And then it'll select the rest.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, pull up towards you. Big enough front, yeah.
You want to jump in there? There, matches here. Yep, right on the front.
Are you down the ends inside there?
If you release it, yeah, there you go.
Are you going to the end?
Hang on a second, Carter, we'll have to re-earning reports here.
Okay.
You got Carter on yet?
Yeah, he should still be there.
Yeah, I'm here.
He's got a. Forget open that here. Audio's not there?
Yeah, we need to switch it back over.
Well, unplug you and reblade it back and you're doing it.
Roger, can you?
Yep, yep, I can hear you.
Oh, it's on the, it's on the computer here?
He can hear, but he can't talk.
No.
Well, he, he's talking, the audio is just coming through here, so we just got to change the.
I can hear all of you just fine.
It's, it's coming out of my computer instead of out of the owl. That's the difference.
Try it again.
Can you talk, Carter?
Yep, yep, I can hear you.
It's still on the computer.
Yep, yep, I see what I did. I see what I did. All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
First phone TV, can you hear me now? Isn't that sprint? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. First thing on our agenda is the holiday schedule. Oh. Yeah, we do. We will call the meeting to order for the new year and it is. Nine ten. All members are present or in person and one online.
Jack, is this your copy?
Yes.
First thing on the agenda is the holiday schedule.
You had.
Uh, you guys got your computer? Uh, we don't have.
Uh, Derek, uh, I think.
Just Derek Campbell?
The new, he's getting.
Yeah.
The new one who said that he set up the.
We're just starting the new year. Yeah, if you can bring it in here or whatever.
Yeah, I got it right.
Now.
No, it's all right. Carter, you haven't, haven't had a chance to look at the holiday schedule.
I have, yep, I've, I've seen the packet, yep.
I emailed them the packets.
Good.
I've got it right here.
Perfect. Josh, have you seen the schedule?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any questions on it?
I do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the holiday schedule?
I would make that motion.
Do I have a second? Carter, would you like to second that?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second on the floor, any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is to motion carried unanimously. Approve official newspapers?
Yep.
Carter, when you're feeling better and you're fine. Uh, if you're here tomorrow or Thursday, I'll have these signs attached.
Okay.
Yeah. We have the Cassius County Advanced Bancroft Registry and Sweet City Herald Press to be approved as official newspapers.
I'll make the motion appropriate.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the official newspapers, is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried unanimously. Are you caught up?
I am.
Construction evaluation resolution matrix, resolution number one, three, twenty-three oh one.
And this for the new members. An explanation of this, this was put in place back when. Uh, all the hog buildings were being built and if you wanted to ever question hog site, if you weren't. If you weren't part of the, uh, matrix. Then you wouldn't be allowed to take, uh, take anything down to the EPC, right? So by having this matrix and, and having our sanitaryian go out and, and review the sites and do a. Uh, evaluation. That allows us to take. Take a unit to the EPC if, if we felt there was a need to, and we've actually done it once or twice since I've been on the board, so. Now, without the value, without the matrix, then you don't, then it's just, we're, we're not, we don't have anything to do with it, so.
So is this something new or is this?
No, no, this is just.
It's, it's standard, but yeah, you have to, you have to reaffirm that decision every year.
Every year, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
That way, and we do it because what it does, it gives the, the citizens a chance to come in here. And voice their opinions either for or against, and usually it's against, uh, you know, hog setup and kind of opens up the. The door for them to speak their mind and. And that's actually changed the mind of some, some buildings or some producers of putting up the building. There's been a couple occasions where they actually. Either moved the building or didn't, didn't put it up, so it, it does, it does work occasionally.
It, it helps for the uniform set of rules across the state.
Yep.
Sure.
Well, and it also helps that they approach their neighbors more readily than if just a DNR approves it.
Right.
So I would approve resolution one, three, twenty-three oh one. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Plath, any discussion? Hearing done, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I am. Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have another resolution, approved depositories for our treasurer. And the resolution number is one, three, twenty-three oh two. I have any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the depositors.
I'll make the emotion.
Motion by Wagner, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stecker, any discussion? Hearing now, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Just one?
Just one.
Next, we have another resolution, number one, three, twenty-three oh three, approved depositors by resolution for the sheriff. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, and a recorder, I'm sorry. I'll move to approve resolution one, twenty-one, oh, three, twenty-three oh three, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stecker, any discussion? Hearing now, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Next, we have resolution one, three, twenty-three oh four, resolution authorizing audited issued checks for payment. Do I have that motion for resolution one, oh, three, twenty-three oh four?
Don't move.
Motion by Stecker, second by, I'll second Wagner, any discussion? Hearing now, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the eminent domain commission. I have a motion to approve the eminent domain commission. Motion by Plath. Second by.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, you got it cut out there a little bit again, what was that?
The eminent domain commission.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Plath, second by Wagner.
Do we, do we know if all these names are? Good, like there's no one that has to come off or.
We looked at it when you were on vacation.
Okay, I knew we had gone over it a lot, I don't know if it was last year or year and a half, whatever it's been and updated several, so.
We passed it down.
Okay. Sounds good.
All those in favor of the eminent domain commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we have approved the mileage rate for county business. It's at fifty-eight point five. Do I have a motion to approve the mileage rate?
That's what it adds, is that?
Yeah, the new rate.
The newest sixty-five five.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you wanted this rate. Yeah, which rate do you want?
Well, usually you prove it at the IRS rate, like you can do whatever you want, but IRS rate raised there is to.
Yeah, I know, sixty-five point, yeah.
That's a big jump.
Yeah.
There, there was a mid-year jump.
Right, we didn't approve it, so.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion one way or another?
It's current rate, you got fifty-eight?
Fifty.
Fifty-eight five is current.
They want, they want?
Uh, sixty-five five.
Five, well, they believe that fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight point five?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Plath to leave it at fifty-eight point five. Do I have a second? I'll second his motion. Discussion.
I tried, I tried to. See if there's a way we can get it, get it changed to that allows supervisors to get paid to drive to work. To go to meetings and stuff, but, uh. Found out that. It's the, the supervisor, the reason I did it was because no other elected official gets paid to drive to work. And I think it was right to the supervisor's got paid to drive into the courthouse, but, um. About Tammy looked into it and said that. Uh, get the supervisor, we could, we could do it, but if the supervisor made the claim for driving to work, that, that you'd have to pay it. But I just wanted. There'd be no one that I did, you know, try to get changed for supervisors because no other elected officials get paid, get that benefit to get paid to drive, drive into courthouse on Tuesdays, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, where is, is this get paid also to? And correct me if I'm wrong, where is, is this, get paid also to attend meetings, if, you know, committee meetings and such?
I had no problem with that, I just didn't think it was right that, that su- only elected officials that get paid to drive into the courthouse were supervisors. None of the other elected officials get paid by having to drive here five days a week.
Sure, sure.
The discussion was, on that was because, you know, back in the day, it was the supervisor's duty to kind of check things out on their way in, you know, going over different roads, taking different paths and stuff like that, so. You may have, you know, gone further out, more mileage than what you'd normally put on a regular basis coming in, and I think that's what it was for, was to be able to do that if you decide to take, you know, an hour long cruise around your district and the county prior to coming into the meeting.
Excellent, and I don't know how much you're gonna do at seven o'clock in the morning driving, but.
Right.
But anyway, just, I just wanted to know that I did look into it.
Well, I would say that's been the same way for, I, I don't know when that was put into place, but it's been in the code for a long time, it's standard that way. And I think we should follow IRS mileage rate, it doesn't just affect supervisors, as was previously mentioned in a different meeting, but it affects every, every other department head and every other employee of the county as well, and with the increased costs associated with travel, with fuel, parts, vehicle costs in general, I think we should follow the IRS current rates, which would be sixty-five five.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Oh, any more discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Plath.
Yes.
Matt.
No.
Wagner.
No.
Stacker.
No.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion failed. Three to two, will I call for a new motion?
I would make a motion to accept the current IRS mileage rate.
That would be point six five.
For, for twenty-twenty-three, which would be sixty-five and a half cents, correct?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Wagner second sit, any more discussion?
I, I don't have a problem with either of the numbers, I think it's just a good idea to, I, I think we should stick to the IRS rate year to year, it changes every year and, and that way we're not constantly trying to just pull a number out of the hat that sounds good, and just stick to what every other business abides by, so that would be my opinion.
Any more discussion? Hearing done, do a roll call votes.
Plath.
No.
Matt.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Jerks.
Oh. Next thing on the agenda is approval of food and lodging direct bill for Cassuth County employees. Everybody understand the motion?
The, for the two new ones, this allows, well, it's, it's listed in the packet, of course, but it allows employees to charge motel and food bill directly, some instances this is used, but a lot of times it's paid on reimbursement basis, so. Kind of depends on how you go through the process, but it's just prior approval for business travel.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I would make that motion to approve.
Motion by Stacker, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Wagner, any more discussion?
There is a, still haven't that limited place for food, is that right?
Yeah.
Twenty down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Next, we have lodging for out-of-county inmates. And the limit is fifty dollars, or the, the rate is fifty dollars per day. Do I have a motion to approve the rate for lodging of out-of-county inmates?
Is that what Roger Fisher recommended again, I assume, okay.
I'll move. Motion by Plath, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wagner, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous. Next, we have decision discussion prior authorization claim spending limit. It's five, uh, five thousand dollars for elected official and department heads. There's always been some discussion on county engineer, would you like anything in this, Mr. Stacker?
I'm okay with it the way it is.
Do I have a motion to approve the spending limit?
I would make that motion.
Second makes motion, we would second it.
I'll second.
Wagner second sit, any discussion? Seeing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimous. Next thing on the agenda. Job description of the Cassuth County medical examiner investigators.
Morning. Morning Bill. The first thing I have is the job description for the ME department. Um, there was a couple of changes made in the state handbook, so I just updated the county handbook to match that. Um, if you look at the handout I gave you on page one, first thing I changed, just maybe just because we're doing an update on job description was a salary range. The old one, we had the actual dollar amount listed. I just thought for ease of not updating this, anytime there's a change in the future, just to simply have the state asset by the county board of supervisors, which will be done during our budgeting process. We'll look at the, just like we do any other department, look at the, at the pay rate and interpret if that needs to be changed, so. But I would just change on the first page, just change it into asset by the county supervisors versus having the actual pay rate on job description. On page two, um, the minimum qualification requirements, um, the old, the old description stated that it had to be, uh, attend the Saint Louis University, uh, School of Medicine, basic death investigation course. That now states within the Iowa, Iowa code that it can be uh, the Saint Louis class or the state approved equivalent. So the state of Iowa is working on a new equivalent course to match up with Saint Louis course. So if that gets put in place, we could possibly use the Iowa course versus having to go to Saint Louis to get the training. Um, then on page three, the, um, appointments for the medical examiners, uh, in the, in the state code, it states that it has to be appointed for a two-year period, and that has to be appointed commence on January first, unless the first is a Sunday, uh, then it commences on January the second. Prior to this, we've been doing it basically on fiscal year. According to the state code, it's, it's calendar year, so this is just a change. Uh, the next item on the agenda will reappoint, just to get us on track with that and the correct dates versus the fiscal year. That's only three changes on the, on the actual job description that we had. Any questions on those three items?
You have no changes on the staff?
That's on the next motion.
Yeah, it looks like there was, there's less now than there was before, if I remember correctly.
So do I have a motion to approve the job description of the medical examiner investigators as changed? I'll make the motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Stacker. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous. Next, we have appointment of Cassuth County medical examiners and deputy county medical examiners and medical investigators.
So the current, um, medical examiner for Cassuth County is Dr. Yelly.
Yeah.
So that is going to stay the same, so we just need to reappoint Dr. Yelly as the Cassuth County medical examiner. Once, once Dr. Yelly is the, the medical examiner, then he appoints uh, the other, for the, for the other providers, their partners at the hospital as deputies. Uh, there'll be deputy medical examiners under Dr. Yelly, and then the bottom one is the, um, medical examiner investigators. And I did include a copy of this in your packet.
Yeah.
It wasn't signed when I put that in your packet, because I was gone for a few days, so I wanted to get it in your packet before I left, but we do have a signed one from Dr. Yelly. Date it, uh, December twenty-first.
Do I have a motion to approve Dr. Yelly as a medical examiner for the county?
So.
Deputies.
And the deputy.
It's all together.
Yeah.
Is there any questions on that, I know Kyle, you mentioned there's less.
Do, yeah, do we have enough, are we needing more, I mean, I see there's only.
When we started year and a half ago, or whenever it was, we had four, uh, death investigators, uh, one's been a medical lead.
Yeah.
So currently, um, we're, we have been running with three since July.
Yeah.
Three gets at times to be a little hectic when you run a couple of weeks in a row. Depends on the call by, of course, and our call box has been up. But for right now, I'd like to stay with the three, and the next item, we'll proceed from there, we can make a change or we can pick back.
Yeah. Thanks for the update that way.
Do I have from? You, you, I didn't.
I said.
You made the motion and Wagner second.
Yeah.
Yep. Plath and Wagner. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have to appoint drainage attorney. And we have Jim Hudson down.
Jim Hudson is the attorney that wrote or compiled the chapter four sixty-eight of the code, didn't he? Or was that?
Father.
What's that?
His dad did.
His dad, oh, okay, okay.
So he, he knows it very well.
I thought the name sounded familiar, okay, yep, yep.
I, I would make motion to appoint him again for the twenty-twenty-three year.
Second by Wagner, any more discussion? Carter, you are, you're fine.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Discussion decision, emergency response training complex building parking lot, former UBC building.
Uh, she's not gonna be available till after. Sorry, so if we can come back to that.
Yeah.
Uh, Chrisa.
Yeah, good morning, thanks for having me on the agenda. So when we got the building a year ago, we had some issues with the parking with the facility to the north. A lot of their employees and, um, business, uh, people were coming in and parking there, and so we tried, we give it a try, and once we get moved in, the problem being is now they are parking there, they park at the very end, um, and it's very hard to get trailers in and out. We've had to move trailers around, um, and it's very difficult. They park at the end, we're supposed to identify some parking spots. It, it just doesn't work, because when we have to go put a trailer in to, on the bus, on the east side or garage door, we have to go all the way to the, almost to that building to the north of us, in order to get in, where we have people that are there, so we have to kind of scoot to the side, which makes it very difficult. And then you have, like, probably six or seven cars sometimes that are parked on the west side of that parking lot towards Highway one sixty-nine. It makes it hard to get trailers coming in and off of the road, um, which matter, doesn't matter which direction you're coming from, you're coming from south of the door. So as other emergency ba- buildings such as EMS, such as fire, no one's allowed to park in their parking spots or park in there. Uh, yes, I don't know when there's an emergency, either does the fire department. I really would like to have the board consider, uh, not allowing the business people to use that parking for their purposes. Um, and not only that, safety wise, I don't know when the county gets there to, to scoop it, so, you know, I don't want anybody falling, that could come back on us. They have, there's ways that they can manage their parking, I know that that was brought up at our last very initial meeting that, you know, tried to do a way in and, and that hasn't happened, there's continuing. Uh, when we have meetings, I have to make sure I go to each business in that complex and tell them that we have trainings and meetings there, please do not park there. While sometimes we do have some trainings that come up that I don't get there, I don't have anybody respond back to me saying, yep, 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 and we will park there, so. I feel like, um, on my point, we really need to look at not allowing people to park in there. So talk to insurance regarding that, and there were some issues having people park in our parking lot, uh, insurance.
Yeah, so the, the email we had from the insurance company was February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, so almost a year ago, they weren't allowed to have been that long. Uh, but the insurance company certainly wasn't the liability, um, the liability automatically goes to that property for the county. But they, they recommended that we had some kind of a contract or some kind of a, um, not an easy, but a contract in place with those that we reviewed, adjusted, renewed, or terminated at any time. If we're gonna continue to allow that, no, we never really got into the discussion as far as the, the drive-through like store park. This is just the parking lot itself, so we're gonna continue up to possibly address the, um, drive-through as well.
The parking lot does go up to the north side of, to the south side of that building.
I don't know if you guys remember, last year, Kyle was here to talk about the difference between these, both in the actual contract on that property.
Correct.
Where these, but it's forever and the contract can be, can be changed or terminated. And it kind of stopped there, we decided to wait until I had the building was completely completed. Up to early happens, so it's less of a great.
Right.
Parking lot.
How much of that parking lot is owned by county?
All of it.
All of it, basically, so.
All the way into the south end.
That drive-through.
That drive-through is actually a county property.
So what are you suggesting that we block it off and only allow for the emergency management?
Yeah.
Is that gonna affect their drive-through?
Probably.
Have you had any, um, discussions with them prior to this coming on the agenda here? Because.
Prior to this, I've stopped a couple of times at Taves and left my car, he has never returned my call. Um, they showed up the last time and we agreed that we would just try it. Um, and then maybe identify some parking spots, but there's really not a good place to identify a certain number of spots for them to park at, because if it's too close to their building, then I can't get trailer in this way, and then they have semis that come in, and then they park clear up by the building, and sometimes they have blocked off for me to get into the garage part if I had to get something out. I'm not taking the time to run to each facility and say, hey, whose vehicle is that or whose, especially if I have to get a piece of equipment out. Again, I'm just going back to, it's no different than fire, it's no different than EMS, when there's an emergency, they don't take time to, hey, you gotta move your vehicle. They don't know when those things are gonna happen, this is the same thing.
So the problem I kind of have with that is, um, you'd have to block, you know, pretty much block it off and only allow for, you know, county employees to be able to park there. Problem with that is if you put, you know, blockades up or, you know, those bumpers or whatever and put in place there, you may still have issues with the trucks, you know, getting the, the training vehicles in there. Um, not to mention that we may end up having the businesses there coming in. Um, not to mention that we may end up having the businesses there coming in and basically complaining that they are losing business because they have no parking available, that people drive past because they can't get through there. You know, we'll have that complaint coming in too, if we decide to block that off. Um, if we don't block it off and just put up signs, people will still end up parking there. So a, and you, you can't, you can't exactly just banish a vehicle from, from that parking lot. Um, so I just kind of have a difficulty how we would handle that. You know, and, and keep from those businesses coming back to us and, and complaining that we're affecting their revenue. Um, so my, my thought is if, you know, we had a chance to meet with them, kind of make agreements on, on how we can handle it and move forward. Um, if we could get a diagram of the parking lot to figure out how much of the, the property is ours versus theirs. And if there's anything that we could do to work, well, work it out with them, um, I think that would be important because, you know, we don't want to affect their revenue too.
That property was for sale for a year. Right here.
And they had.
Had the opportunity to approach the previous owners or us and say, can we buy off a portion of that property before it was sold or before it was specialized?
A, and their defense, they didn't plan on having county come in and buy that property and then blocking off that parking lot. There, you know, they could have been looking at it as that's another business going in there and they would be open to leaving that open for public parking.
And I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. The other part is too, when we initially talked about it. And I do believe, I think it was you, Jack, and can make sure I'm right on that. But he did bring up the fact that, you know, look at your parking situation too. You know, how can you increase your parking in your area that you have? At that time, they didn't want to do that. They didn't want to, to make and look at their parking situation to increase the level. Plus there's public parking across the street. I get that. Oh. But the business people, owners can park across the street, allowing their customers to park there. Again, there's a way in on the north side to their complex and there's a road, there's an entrance right at the south end of that complex. So they can get in and out of there. It's just not parking up in the area that we need to be able to move.
Right.
So that's my concern. They're parking up into the parking stalls in the parking lot. I'm not saying block so they can't get into their, their facilities. I'm just saying blocking, allowing them to park in those parking spots in the park.
They have the old, allowing it to keep using the drive-through, but to keep allowing parking in the parking lot.
That's totally up to you guys. I mean, I just.
I'm asking you how, how much of the hindrance would that be if we let the drive-through, let, allow them to use the drive-through, but, but it's blocked all parking, public parking.
The, the problem with that though is you still have the issue of insurance because if they're driving through the parking lot, if there's an accident, if they hit one of the county vehicles or something while they're going through that drive-through, then it becomes a liability for the county.
I, I don't, I don't know if I completely agree with that. If you have a vehicle-to-vehicle accident, your normal insurance should handle that, especially if they're at fault. I would not be concerned. I guess I would refer to our insurance agents, but I would not be concerned about that. I, I think it's important to remember to not have government as ourselves being a hindrance to public, uh, or private businesses and all that. So I think we need to, we need to be a team player here and good neighbor in that regard. And I, I don't see how just making some decision in the boardroom without having a solid conversation with them would, would fulfill that.
I also want to, you, you did say something about having the employees park, you know, across the street and the, you know, public parking. Only problem I have with that is you have to make reasonable accommodation. These businesses have to make reasonable accommodation. If they hire someone that is handicapped and can't handle that walk across the street, then they have to allow them to park in the customer parking lot thus making parking less and causing them to potentially.
You have to have, you have to have, uh, a handicap parking spot in front of your business.
Right. Right. And then.
That's the combination they have to make. And then they have to make sure that the, they have, uh, a place for the wheelchair to get, to go upon.
A, and that, and that's, you know, for their, their customers to use. Now, if they've got an employee that's using that, the handicap parking spot because they are handicapped and they, you know, can't walk across the street, that's taking up their handicap parking. So they can't have a customer that comes in that is handicapped and use that spot. You see what I mean?
It's, that's the case. It has, has another handicap parking spot.
Exactly. Yeah.
So it's up to the business, you know, that's not, that's not our, our.
Right. And then.
It is, makes no difference on the handicap accessible to their businesses because it's not accessible handicapped because they got a bumper there. So that's not going to make any difference. My problem is it's an emergency building. And we bought it for use for an emergency building and, and I don't think they let anybody park in front of the fire station. I don't think they let anybody park in front of the doors to the police department. If they're going to drive through the drive-through, I just say, okay, drive through the drive-through.
I don't, I mean, I would be willing to, to say, let the drive, let the driver stay or just shut off the parking. Cause I can see we don't, you don't, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to run into businesses, you know? Whatever you have to get it, get it out there and have, they get you move the cars out there.
Can, can you describe specific instances where this was an issue?
Anytime you get the big red trailer out, that trailer's forty foot long. Mustn't be a phone for anything.
So how, like, how many, how many times does that happen since we had the conversation with them?
But it also goes back to how many times does the fire department get their rips out too? It's, it doesn't matter.
It's an emergency.
It's a emergency. One time is enough, but even when we're hauling equipment in and changing around, I'd have to swing all the way around to get in in order to get straight to backup. You cannot do that when you have cars at this part of the, on the west side of the parking lot, blocks that entrance. So you got like this much through the drive-through to try without hitting somebody's car. I do not want any car damage beyond the county insurance. I am very respectful of our equipment and want to make sure that nothing gets damaged or somebody else's. So when they park that close, it lies an issue. Doesn't matter which way you come in. Doesn't matter if you're coming from south or you're coming from the north. If you still have to go all the way around, even the semis that have to pull in there to unload their alcohol, they do the whole same thing as I do. So, and they have problems getting in there because people park there. So we've had classes that I've had out of state people come or out of county people come to that had, didn't have parking spot because we had people parking. So if I'm going to have trainings in there and state is using our building for trainings, I want to have those spots open.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I just don't want to make a decision without the, you know, the businesses being full aware. And I think we should make it, uh, at least, I don't know about making it a public hearing, but at least, you know, notifying them that we will have this meeting. Um, we could potentially schedule it for one week, two weeks out, however long it need, you know, we need for notifying businesses that this is coming because I don't know about you, but I would like a sign popping up saying that you can't park here when you've been allowed to.
And, and that's exactly what happened previously and that's when we reverted and changed course.
But when that happened, I also went to Taves twice, left cards, told him to call me and he never did. So I'm just telling you, I had to go and Kirk Schuker had that alcohol store there. I went to him and he was the go-to between everybody. It wasn't the building owner that came to me. So I will do my due diligence. I will talk with them and we can set up a time. I appreciate that.
And we talked to him if they, if they go on, as we don't have again, then we don't have to take the time to meet with them, but if they want to have a meeting. I don't know that we're leaning towards letting you drive up it, uh, you should, you know, close the parking lot off to.
Check.
And then I, I think we should have a meeting with them. Either way, if they're, if they're not going to have a substantial issue with it, that's easier for the conversation, but I think we should have it at a public forum in that regard so that it's open and available to anyone.
We could put it on the schedule, um, have it advertised that this is happening to give the business owners ample time to, you know, be notified and be present. If they're unable to be present, then that, I mean, it's unfortunate for them. Um, but I would like, uh, essentially a diagram and, you know, some things drawn up of ideas of what you guys would like in place. Um, that way they can see it prior to it happening as well. And then I think if, you know, we get that information, we can make a decision then.
So we'll put it on the agenda for three weeks.
Three weeks. I think three weeks would be fine.
Three weeks.
Three sounds good.
Gives them twenty-one days roughly, so notification.
But the record show that we will readdress this at issue in three weeks.
Who's going to take care of the five persons?
Um, I, yeah, you guys think. I think that's her.
Yeah, should be her responsibility.
Probably she sent that letter, like, it's our head.
She could, yeah, she could notify them that it's coming, but we could potentially send a letter to them as well as.
I should know who to send it to.
Um.
Send it to the business.
Yeah.
Directly to the business.
Business owners.
All the businesses.
You go all out there.
I, I would.
I don't know.
Liquor store, there's Verizon. I don't even know.
Chiropractor.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Well, he owns it, doesn't he?
That's Shane Tave. Yeah. Yeah.
The only one you have to send a letter to is the one that owns it.
Probably just a tape, yeah.
I just, I just send it to, to Shane and, and go from there.
Cause I don't think you need to send it to anybody else. The owner that works.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. He could talk to the business owners and notify them that this is happening too.
There is tenants, so you can talk to his tenants.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. We'll talk about it. Uh, discussion to approve increase of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to NICO. It's a per capita increase from seventy-six cents to eighty-two cent.
All of this was noticed when they sent their invoice for their application. Uh, we submitted what you guys approved last year.
Yeah.
And they sent us back of noticing it wasn't paid in full, that the capita increased, so they requested more funds.
Bridge contract.
Uh.
Yeah.
But that is not what was approved by the board last year. So before we can pay what the difference, we need to prove what we're doing.
I would move that we approve the increase of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to NICO. Do I have a second to this?
Hey Doug, we'll be ready for you in the order.
Plath, any discussion?
Bye.
Carter, you understand it? Yep. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post motion carries unanimous.
I just went down the rest of your quick ones.
Yep, we're waiting for Doug.
So if you can give us one, two, three, four, five, six.
Now. Yeah, here's.
You said Renee would be there. You're two years.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you.
So does this go down to Jack then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're, you're one. You're one.
Yeah, I mean, you need to grow.
I know.
You have to put on your high heels.
Yeah.
Jack will be back in a minute.
Yeah, I saw down at Angers, they get those spring shoes. They, you can jump a little bit higher with them. Get some of those.
I'm not very coordinated.
Well, at least this way it would be on camera, so you could send it into AFD.
Exactly.
She should levitate. You know, have them spring shoes and then levitate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Renee is going to be horrible. Doug, we are up to approve resolution one, three, twenty-three oh five to award bridge contract replacement.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, we have a project that was led at the Department of Transportation.
Director.
December, I think it was the third Tuesday of December, uh, lowed responsible bidder was Graves Construction. They're out Spencer. They worked with us before. Uh, this is a federally funded, uh, bridge project, so, uh, it will all be funded through the Department of Transportation. It's located on the west line of section sixteen of Wesley Township, which would be on P sixty-four, approximately three miles north of highway eighteen. They did receive two bids for the project. Graves were low and we're coming to a point where we need to award this contract. And I would recommend to the board that they award that. What will happen is the board will award this. Uh, we will notify the contractor that the project has been awarded. Then the contractor will submit a signed contract along with, uh, performance, bonds, and certificates of insurance. And then I will sign on part of Cassuth County electronically. I will actually sign the contract. There's a resolution here. Board, uh, believes it's in the best interest to construct this, uh, sought appropriate professional guidance. Finds the resolution appropriate and necessary. Um, therefore, we resolve that we accept the bid from Graves Construction Company in the amount of six hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents and award the associated contract of safe. And then it goes be a further resolve that, uh, all other resolutions, parts of resolutions in conflict with this are hereby appealed and be resolved by the board that after receiving the necessary contract documents, including but not limited to contractors' bonds, certificate shirts, uh, Douglas A. Miller County Engineer, Cassuth County, get, be and is hereby designated, authorized, empowered on behalf of the board supervisors of Sec Cassuth County to execute contracts in connection with the afforded construction project led through the DOT for this account.
The resolution number is one oh three, twenty-three oh five. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion by Plath. I'll second it. Any questions on the resolution? Any comments? Carter, you heard all that?
Yep.
So would all, for the county is responsible for, um, any of this? This is all just taken care of by the DOT?
Well, the county will be, we did all the design work on it. We got everything ready for letting it was led at the Department of Transportation. Now we will be responsible for all the inspection on it, uh, all the construction state, all the contract administration of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing down to a roll call vote, please.
Doctor.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know like order everything.
And I messed it up anyways.
Sorry, not a big deal.
And Tim, if you could sign it as well, and then you'll have it through your coffee. Very good.
We have some construction in right away.
We have one request, it's from Alan Lubenthal. Uh, Alan, his brother Andy own a hog facility. It's on one hundredth Avenue, it's near where Phil and Rosemary Gorman live, if you're familiar with that area. Uh, they apply manure to, uh, I believe Phil's field, and then also there's Carl, who I believe is Phil's father. Anyway, they need to go under, they need to traverse the road, Hundredth Avenue, in order to pump that manure, and they are requesting to, uh, go under one hundredth Avenue with a pipe. Uh, our policy on this is the county road department, uh, installs the pipe. The person that is applying for this, they pay for the metal pipe to go through there. Uh, it's kind of a win-win situation for everybody. Uh, this, uh, allows a person to get that applied without going out on roads and tearing them up. So we kind of together put that through. So Al has requested that, we have a, a permit that is signed, and I would recommend that the board would approve of this as well.
Is this going under gravel or paved?
It's under gravel.
Under gravel.
I'll make the motion.
Carter makes a motion to approve.
I would second that.
Stacker seconded, any more discussion?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if you guys caught Doug's explanation there, but I think this is a good situation in general, we've done many of these, it saves a lot of abuse of the gravel roads when manure is applied in the fall, so it's a good thing.
Any more discussion, hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye. Posed, motion carried unanimously. Anything on zoning or anything else, Doug?
Uh, just some discussion items, I guess, uh, quickly. Uh, the Irvington Bridge. Talking with Adam this morning, he is optimistic that they are going to kind of clean up and finish up their work to get that bridge in there this week. And then, uh, we may have to haul them a couple of loads of fill in order to complete that, which I think we can find. Then they need to put guardrail on, and they're planning on doing that, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that thing opened up. Uh, we still have open positions at the mechanic shop and two positions at the Titanca shop. And, uh, we have interviewed some, uh, some applicants for the Titanca shop. And, uh, we need to talk with Scott and make a decision there. Another thing, just for the public and for the board, we are starting to switch over some of our strobe lights on snowplow trucks. We had a grade one flashing amber light, and we've switched to a grade two. Along with that switch, we are putting on the back of the trucks blue and white strobe lights. So on the right-hand side is blue and on the left-hand side is white. And if you've noticed, I think the DOT has done this completely. Uh, the theory behind it is that if you are driving and you see strobe lights come to you, and they're both amber, or you see strobe lights ahead of you, they're both amber, that means a snowplow truck is coming towards you. If you see white and blue, you know it's heading in the same direction as white. So it gives some advanced notice to, uh, to the motorists, traveling motors that are out there with the road when miles are out there. This is just snowplow trucks, it's not our maintainers, our maintainers just. Same ones is what we've had. And then, uh, Bill DePew, he leases our east cylinder gravel pit. And he has indicated he does not want to lease that, so we're getting ready to advertise that in Cassoue and Palo Alto County. I also have some people that have expressed interest as soon as they found out Bill was not going. Uh, they already contacted, so it's. Uh, that's all that I have for county engineer. Uh, for zoning administrator, we have scheduled a public hearing for January twenty-three, twenty, it's twenty twenty-three. Uh, for that's public hearing, uh, for the planning of zoning commission on the carbon dioxide ordinance. Uh, I have been working with Tim, uh, with on that. Notifications are in the papers, they'll be in this week's, uh, Sway City Bancorp and Cassoue. To County Advance this week and next week.
When was that, Doug?
What was the date on that again? You said?
Yeah, I will be emailing you the notice.
Okay.
On everything.
Did, was it January twenty-third?
January twenty-three, which is a Monday. January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, um, notifications are in the paper, the board passed the same papers earlier today.
Yes, yeah.
So they, he did not add any.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Tim is planning to attend this hearing. He also suggests having a court reporter present. Uh, so this will all be, uh, transcribed. He also suggests to, uh, start lobbying other governments, uh, other private entities, um, to, to either present or start submitting uh, information to be added into that. Um, and he also said that more than likely, as soon as the ordinance is approved by the Board of Supervisors, uh, summit, if it's any indication, it will go to court, uh, as they have with other, uh, counties, so. It is at four o'clock.
Four P M.
I am sending emails out to the cities unless you.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have enough time to do anything.
Where will that be held?
In this boardroom.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is anyone else on the? Is Carter the only?
Yeah, Carter, Carter's on.
He's the only one on that I, yeah.
Yeah, he's the only one.
That is all that I have.
Thank you, Doug.
Sure.
Doug, on the amber lights you were talking about, what's, can you describe the difference between the grade one and grade two?
Grade two is visible for, for the.
So it's a measurement that way?
Yeah, the lumens that are put out. Josh, here is a card, if you would, if you have a cellular phone, I text out snow notices to the board, so if you would text me on my cell, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I look forward to working with you, if you do have some questions, feel free to come down, is this? Carter, I put a, a card there, if you will also forward me your information, that way if I have, uh, snow notices, what the road department is doing, I can get them to you.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna ask you how, what was the best way to be, get in contact with you, so, sounds good.
Very good. Um, with that, I don't have anything else. Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
Our next thing on the agenda, discussion about compensation board recommendation. Come on up. We're getting pretty familiar with doing all this.
Yes.
I think that we sent you out a kind of updated packet, uh, of items that we had at our meeting. Some of the things that we usually talk about are, are like the health insurance, how Sioux County pays a hundred percent, and there are other counties that do. There's thirty-eight that pay the single premium a hundred percent, and there's, there are only five that pay a hundred percent for the family. Although if you, if you look there, like between eighty percent, well, all of way more than the majority pays seventy percent up to the hundred percent. There are eighteen other counties that are self-funded, fifteen that are partially self-funded. Then kind of the next is page fifteen, and that is where we compare it to the similar sized cities in Northern Iowa. What Carol Iowa Cherokee played in most counties. And then it has the differences, uh, somewhere above and somewhere below the averages of those counties. And then our neighborous counties, and Cumbol, Palo Alto, Bocas was a big one, right? You have those and, and everybody's above, county attorney is just a hair below, the county sheriff is over eleven hundred dollars below that average. So. And then the page sixteen, uh, then we look at state averages on the top. And, uh, and then we, the bottom of that page is where we compare to the counties that have a similar valuation for property tax valuation. And there again, uh, everybody's below except for the supervisors. And so, uh, and the biggest one is the county sheriff again, over almost eleven thousand dollars behind that. Uh, page seventeen has a history of, of what's been recommended on the left side, and then your decisions are on the right side. Down at the bottom, it is where we recommended, uh, five percent for the supervisors, eight percent for the county attorney, eight percent for the auditor, eight percent for the reporter, and fifteen percent for the sheriff, and eight percent for the treasurer. And it shows their current salaries and the, how much the increase would be. And then what the, with that increase, what the salary would be, so. Questions?
You can decrease them all, as long as it's an equal amount to everyone. If I'm not mistaken, the supervisor, you can, you can do zero on the supervisors if you still want to.
Right.
I think I'm correct.
Yep, the supervisors is the only one that you can move independent of the rest.
They need to be moved equally percentage-wise.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, last year reduced sixty point six percent, everybody across the board.
Okay.
Yeah, and that worked out, um, nicely because of, it was one sixth reduction cause the sheriff was twelve, everyone else was six, so it took one percent off. Or two percent off the sheriff, one percent off everyone else. But.
Yeah, probably the biggest thing is we have, we pay all the insurance here. That's the biggest factor, I think.
Yes.
Josh or Carter, do you have any questions?
I was at the compensation board meeting, I understand, yeah.
Then I would call for a motion to approve, disapprove of a compensation board recommendation.
I would make a motion to accept it as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Stacker, seconded by Wagner, discussion.
I, I think I would be more, I, I don't know, it just, I guess the current rate of inflation is about seven point three percent or something like that right now, so I mean, our the, the recommendations for salary are actually higher than that, um. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are, but I wouldn't mind going down a, a point or two.
The two things I would respond to that is the sheriff is higher primarily because of the state law um, that we have to comply with or are supposed to comply.
I, I get that one, yep.
Ones, um, you would have to reduce it by an equal percentage, so.
Yep.
Five would be, there'd be something that would be odd math there, not saying it's impossible, but do you have a number or recommend?
I would recommend lowering by two percent.
You can't, you can't do that, be, it would have to be a percent of a percent. So like, if you wanted.
You can do eighty.
Auditor.
Sixty percent.
Well, if you wanted, if you wanted the eights reduced by two percent.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, okay, okay.
Have to do a twenty-five percent reduction.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, okay.
It has to be proportional.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Supervisors have got caught up and then some.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
There's chairman, there's a motion that's in the eighth second.
Yeah, do you want to?
I mean, I mean, we're comparatively to other counties around us, we are paid rather well.
So I'll call for the vote, do a roll call vote, please.
Can, can you clarify the motion for me?
To accept the recommendation as a compensation board, which allows for a five percent increase to the board of supervisors, eight percent increase for the auditor, county attorney, recorder, and fifteen percent increase for the sheriff, eight percent for the county treasurer.
It, it was as presented, um.
Okay. No.
Vector?
No.
I made the motion, I would say yes.
I'll say no. Floor is open for a new motion.
I would make a motion for a twenty-five percent decrease.
To everything?
To to the salaries, yes, to, to everything.
Including the supervisors, or you want to change that lower, or? That's the other option.
We could, we could do, we could do, um, oh, tw- twenty-five percent decrease, uh, for the department heads and sheriff and fifty percent decrease for the supervisors.
So your motion is twenty five percent for everyone except the supervisors and that would be fifty percent, correct?
Correct.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Mister Wagner seconded, any more discussion?
I guess the, the reason I made the motion to accept it as it was, um, presented is. I feel a compensation board does their due diligence to go through all the numbers and. There was quite a few years we accepted their recommendation as presented, so. That would be. My logic behind it, I appreciate the work they do and.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Pass.
Now that?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Jerks?
Uh, I'll say yes.
Motion.
So is that an abstain or pass? Oh, you said no. I didn't, I didn't catch that.
We'll only read the, the vote again.
Um, so I have Nav, yes, Wacker, yes, Plath, or Stecker, now Jerks, yes, and then.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate your time and thanks for being so right.
Yes, you're getting way too good at it.
I keep learning, I just, I've had lots to learn yet. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you next year, Tom. We have a, next thing on the agenda is a priority list for natural conservation and wildlife area. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Motion to approve by Plath. Second by.
I'll second.
Stecker, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next thing on our agenda is reappoint Megan Rastson as district food conservation board member.
Please by please, so I will look to reappoint.
Motion by Plath, I'll second your motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Carried unanimous. Next, we are up to elected official department head, employee appointees. And the first one on there to be appointed is Donna Nielsen. I would move to approve Donna, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Plath, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous, the second one is Carissa Mueller as emergency management coordinator. Do I have a motion to approve, Carissa? I'll move to approve, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Wagner, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous, the next one is EMS administrator, Phil Alberts. Do I have a motion to approve, Phil?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by.
I heard Carter.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous, the next one is onsite evaluation for the master matrix, Alan, I mean Aaron, Aaron Montague.
So moved.
Motion by Plath, second by.
I'll second.
Stecker?
Yup.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, next one is weed commissioner, again it's Aaron Montague. Can't leave you out, Carter.
Again?
Yeah, second by.
I'll second.
Wagner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next one is environmental health specialist, same person, Aaron Montague, is there a motion to approve him? Motion by Plath, second by.
I'll second.
By Carter, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous, the next one is veterans affairs, Daniel Green, do I have a motion to approve Daniel Green?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker.
Second.
Second by Plath or Wagner?
Wagner.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Next one is safety director for secondary roads, Nick Roffler. Do I have a motion to approve Nick?
I'll make the motion.
Carter was moving his lips.
I'll second.
Second by.
May I, I'll make the motion.
You, you did.
Okay.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimous, next one is appoint Doug Miller as county engineer. Motion by Plath, I'll second the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimous. Next one, engineer of Cassup County landfill and transfer station, Doug Miller. Do I have a motion to approve Doug?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous, next one is zoning administrator, Doug Miller, do I have a motion to approve Doug?
I'll make that motion.
That Wagner?
Yes.
Do I have a second, Carter?
Oh, she, I'll say her.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous, the next one is manager of Cassup County landfill and transfer station. Douglas, or Dustin Hanson?
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion to Mr. Stecker, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wagner, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous. Next one is forest fruit tree reservation tax exemption. Do I have a motion to approve the tax exemption for fruit trees?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by.
I'll second.
Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next one is township appointment for trustees and clerks. Actually, this one's for clerks. We have a list of the clerks for the township trustees, do I have a motion to approve the clerks?
I'll make the motion, oh, I'll say good.
I got Carter, then I'll have. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous, next one is township trustees for a four-year term. And we have the list, is there any questions on the list? If not, I would need a motion to approve.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Wagner, second by. Carter's talking again.
I didn't say anything, second.
Your lips moved just a little bit on the big screen, so.
Yeah. So I have a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. And no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Next one is appointment to the NICOG board, city official business. Is to appoint Harley Colash as our city official. Sorry. I would move to approve Harley.
And Marina, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got Marina.
I'll second that.
Um, second by Stecker, any discussion?
Roger.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimous, next is the board of health. Point Jack Plath, Dixie Meyer and Dr. Rachel Van Tiger. Motion by Plath, second by.
I'll second.
By Carter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. We're ten thirty, wanna quit here and call Renee? You gonna call Renee, I'm gonna take a five minute break?
Yeah.
Rest my leg.
Are they still doing the farm bureau meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
I catch on EMS one till this morning, even that, I mean. You had to, we screwed it up last year, the next one.
Didn't we already do that?
More exciting up there.
Oh, not having EMS.
We had both. Yes. Well, that's last year, we had, had listed any MS ministry slash.
But didn't we approve you and?
Yeah, we had EMS today, I made that motion. We did that earlier in the day on the agenda, yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
That was, that was this morning, when you were talking.
Last could be done as a department head.
We, we don't have to once we did that.
Yeah, you should be here.
Yeah, and it's only times.
All the new ones? Come in.
On Christmas, I have a guy to. I don't get paid for it.
So we can watch it and then. But, but it would have the money on both sides, you know, the grant. Just, just the man. I got you. Yeah, that, that'll be okay.
Okay, no problem, if, if something's on Thursday, because of the weather for tonight and tomorrow. Otherwise, we'll be over it soon.
Yes.
So. Cause you're. Well, it won't be. And not to wait to do a bunch of them, but there's something. Get right up and up.
Wait until you're back for the list that I think of.
So I. Yeah, I mean, so.
Thank you.
Oh, there's some issue. Fine, all. Yeah, I get it. Yeah, good, yes.
What's that?
Yeah, put me meet them after. When we're back.
God? How many? What's this? Renee? You wanna dial her in?
Yeah, so do we have to hit any number to call out?
Hit two calls.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning, you have the board here. Okay, just one second.
I said, it wasn't any better if you could knock that down with a foam graph. Oh, and it's gonna go through and hurt. Oh. You could pursue this, you damn, I work on the bargain. And the reception. Was that all? Well, this is what actually rides down the peril, okay, so there's no, there's no tracing. Oh, cause it doesn't normally even trace the rising. Right, the, when that comes out, this plastic rides down the ride. Oh, and that's why they call it a seller, that's all. Also, it's that sure still pushing, yeah, instead of being a thirty kilo, probably two kilo. Two, three, and every song. Click that watch that.
I'm feeling naked.
I've done that before.
Yeah. Never. Go on a what? Your appetites? Yeah. Is it certain percentage of trees per acre?
What, it was.
What are we?
So they've been for the free trees, the free trees.
What about it?
How do you apply for that? What are the qualifications?
Contact the assessor's office.
No, this was to have the.
It was setting the, the.
Conservation.
Inspection. It was conservation order assessor's office, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
I would, I would ask Judy, she, she would probably know.
You, oh, that's good, how are you? Yes. Especially, yes, the long meetings are straight.
Assessor, conservation staff.
It's so pointless, that's our conservation staff to expect the retreats, that's what.
I would imagine that's in the code. I don't, I'm not an expert on that, but I bet it's in the code. But yeah, we have Renee on the phone here, whenever you guys are ready.
We are ready. Oh, I found it.
Are you still there, Renee? Hanging out?
I am. Good morning, happy new year.
Renee, we have Willie and Ron and Nick in attendance.
They're in the, they're in the back of the room.
Yeah, we have four supervisors here and one on Zoom that has a fever. So. We're all here.
Okay. Uh, well, did I understand there's two new board members, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Well, sorry, I guess our first time we'll just have to meet through disembodied voices. Um, so I look, I look forward to, uh, meeting you. Um. So, uh. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, well, not make sure, but, uh. That everybody was aware of. What, um, what has been filed with the Public Employment Relations Board. Um, that's the state of Iowa agency that governs and ministers and regulates Iowa's collective bargaining law. Um, but I think sometime last week. Late last week, I've got a, several documents from the Public Employment Relations Board on a. Petition and a stipulation, and I did talk to Roger, um, Friday, I think it was, or Thursday, I don't remember. Um. And, and then I had, I had a phone conversation too with Will, um, about this, so. Um. This is, uh, so. Um, Roger had, Roger's signed the stipulation of bargaining unit, and basically, there's two things. One is, basically what that means is that the board has agreed to how the. Unit has been described, so. I just wanna make sure the board is, you know, not, uh, has knowledge of this. Um, you know, what's been filed, and then how do we proceed going, uh, forward? So, and, and I'll back off if I'm just kind of jumping into this too quickly, and you need a little bit more background. Um, but before bargaining can take place between an employer and, in this case, it'll be employee organization. The description of the unit needs to be defined, so that means who is appropriately included. What classifications are appropriately included in this bargaining unit? It isn't just how everybody wants it to be, because tho- those guidelines are all established and mandated by. The Public Employment Relations Act and the Public Employment Relations Board. So there are some positions that are just statutorily excluded. They can't be included even if the both parties say, well, yeah, we think they should be included. So we wanna make sure that we are complying with what Purb would be considered to be an appropriate bargaining unit. So the petition, um, and Will and I talked about this, you know, a little bit last week, and this is. I don't, anybody, everybody is interested in coming up with something that, you know, we all agree to and we can move forward. Um, and hopefully I can be, you know, not hopefully, I will be of, of help on that. So the first thing we need to do is just, again, I wanted to bring you all up to speed on this, because it is a. It's a formal process and procedure, you know, these are documents that, um. Are important, um, documents, and we just wanna make sure we have the description defined correctly. So, um. What, you know, what I asked Will and, and may, and we can do this, you know, separately too, is. The description really should be very specific, exactly what job titles and classifications are included. The petition that's on file right now with Purb is just, uh, says the employees of the Cassisouth County Courthouse. I did call the, um. Personnel Purb, uh, last week, just to alert them that, um. This was. Something that's maybe going to need to be revised, um, and so she's making the board, the Public Employment Relations Board, uh, aware of that. But I think the first thing that we need to do is just to make sure you boards are all aware and understand. That this has been filed and that sort of thing, and if there's any questions, I can answer. Secondly, is to. Um, work on getting the description of the unit, uh, correctly defined. And one of the things that, um, I will need help with that is just a list of. Uh, employees, I think. I think, uh, Will had this, that the deputies would not be, um, included. So just a list of the. Employees and job titles that would be. Uh, employed in the courthouse. So I will just stop there, see if anybody has any questions, um. Can I back up and explain anything, or? I know this is first for, uh, the board, this is perhaps the first time you're hearing of this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um.
So this is just the courthouse employees?
Well, and there again, see, what does that mean?
Are they included?
I mean, I think courthouse employees to you, to the, to the county may be different than what. Um, you know, the, the, uh, association is viewing it, that's why we need to be, when we sign a stipulation. That means that we have agreed to who is included, and in talking with Will last week, I don't think that's the case. I don't, now, we'll get there, I'm not saying this is any like huge, big, you know, deal or problem, um, but that's. That's the issue here is to both sides agree. And have defined who exactly and precisely is included.
Is, is there anything that needs to change besides the description of who's included? Or is everything else kind of on track or good to go?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think right now, the first order of business is, is to. Um. Make sure that it's, we're clear on who's exactly included and who is exactly excluded. Cause this is going to be the bargaining unit. So those classifications are going to be the bargaining unit. And then, um. So I think that's really, I think that's really the only thing that. And so what I would, what I plan on doing as soon as we get that. Adequately described, um, which might need, need another, uh, conference call next week, um. After I get some info from, um, Tammy and, and from Will. And bring that back and make sure that the board is, you know, okay with how that's being described. Once that's done, I, I'm hoping, I am hoping, and I think this will happen, that Purb will allow us. To sign another stipulation. Um, cause I'm not sure. I'm not exactly sure the stipulation on file, that's probably a question for Todd, for the county attorney, is whether that. Um. It, I can't use another, a valid, you know, because it's, it's the board, you know, the board is the employer here. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking that will happen based on my discussion last week, is that we will simply file a. New petition, and I am assuming Will, you know, the association's gonna be okay with that, I mean, I think it's just a matter of us arriving at. You know, the description, we sign a new stipulation, submit it to Purb, and, you know, we just, we just go from there.
Okay. So we'll have Tammy send you on a list of the, of the names of the people and their job?
Yes, I need job title, but I need names, just because I, it's the job titles that's more important, but I think it, it makes more sense. I think if I can see the names, although that's not really what I'm looking for, it. It's the classifications.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't, it's, it's really the classifications, and, um. You know, there is already, because there was a bargaining unit there before, there is an old, not old. There, there is, there has been a description of the bargaining unit in place there. Um, so either we use that same one, or we start there and we modify it, but. I think first and foremost is a list of names and job titles and department.
We will get that to you.
Okay, um, and then if you have, um. Any questions in the meantime, but I'm hoping maybe we can get that done, um. And I think between Will and I, we can, you know, work out that description, and then by net, you know, your meeting next week is just a matter of, you know. Showing you that, submitting that to you, and then yay and aye, and, and then we can just get it sent in to Purb.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, that's really all I had, again, if you have any questions, I know this is. Um, kinda new, but nothing insurmountable, nothing we can't, nothing we can't work through, and we will.
Nick, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
All right, thank you. Three weeks.
Yep.
Okay, see you.
Bye bye.
For Tammy.
Are we still gonna meet for their Saturday noon, Roger?
Yeah, we, we, we've done all that, haven't we?
I would think so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've heard.
I think we, we, we just did it, I think.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And I understand what she's saying, I'm sure that the paperwork I filed is not.
It's not.
Legal terms, it's a little, probably a little vague.
Yeah.
But that ain't nothing but a couple, give her the list of names and read it, read the included and excluded, and then it's done deal.
I didn't know it had to be specific to every individual, I thought you could bargain as a, anybody that wasn't a.
That's the way I understood it from the lady from Purb, and she accepted this, but she wants more detail, it ain't nothing but. A quick changeover.
Yeah.
And refile it with the state.
Yes. Yeah, we're fine.
And we gotta find out too, whether we get to include.
Well, you.
They've always been included, and the way she talked on Friday, when I talked to her, she said they can't be included, and I said, they have to be. Their clerical staff was accounting. Just because it's a different department, it ain't no different than the reporter.
Oh.
Well, the Roger can't have. They tried going for Roger, Roger couldn't have.
No, he can't do it.
So you can't have life itself.
Oh, they used to be, but now they're not included in the sheriff's union?
Well, the sheriff isn't gonna have the union anymore either, according to.
Okay.
What I've been told.
So was I, I was over across the street too.
Yeah, you were at once. I, I'm, I've been told the sheriff is not gonna have the union representation anymore.
No, they're, they're, they're.
Okay. And your union's gone? So. If. I guess if they're not represented by. Courthouse, who would they be represented by? No one.
Their elected official above them.
Yeah, are you gonna ask them if they're on?
Yeah, they wanna be with us.
They do.
Yeah, cause that's the way it's been for the last. I mean, they were never part of the union, they didn't pay due, but they were, fell under what we got there. So they, to me, it ain't no different than the auditors, you know. An elected official, we're under her, and Karen's elected official, and she has people under them. It's all the same. All the same pot, basically. Just different, we all have different bosses.
Yeah. Take care of it, Will. Let's work, work with Danny, get the names.
I got the names.
Good. Get it down to. Yeah.
Okay. I did this. Yeah. Just all deputies aren't gonna be on? All, it used to be just the first deputies.
Now, all deputies are on.
All that.
Yeah. So.
It's a black bird. This company go ahead on the past. Oh, that's fine, she's a. She did that, you.
Any, anything else? You got anything else? Well, then we're gonna go to Board of Supervisor appointments. Do I have a motion?
I think we did the ones that need to change, because they were held by Tommy or Galen.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we'll, we'll approve them after we get them writing in. Uh, the first one is third judicial corrections, Kyle, you're on that, do you wanna stay on that?
Um, that's actually the only one I would like to trade out or get off of, um, brought that up last year, I believe, but I. I don't mind the meetings necessarily, but I don't, don't have a strong passion there, I think. Um.
Who would you like to?
Uh, well, in, in the work with workforce development, we've got a lot going on there, and. I've kind of seen connections between workforce development and economic development, and I, I'd be interested in. Being part on that, maybe the alternate, I don't know about the delegate, but I think I could build some connections that way. If we trade around a little bit, so that, that's what I would propose.
So what you, uh.
Jack's the alternate for that right now.
Cross your name off, and, and. Who would volunteer to be the third district? Judicial district?
The meetings are typically over in Sioux City, there's usually one a year in Sheldon, there's. The meetings are quarterly, so there's only four meetings a year. But.
Carter and Wagner, which one of you would like to do?
And this has to do with the court system, correct? And, yeah, okay.
Department of Corrections.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Do you volunteer, Carter?
Well. I don't know, unless Josh is terribly interested in this.
Rock, paper, scissors?
I, before we get going too much, how many? Are we just gonna go down the list, or how, how many appointments do we need to do for each of us, or? I guess what are we looking at, I, I haven't been here for this process before.
They, they all have to be done.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. What he's asking is if it needs to be divided out evenly, so like each person has four.
It'll not.
So one person could have eight, and another person could have two.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I see, I see. Well.
It's, uh. You open for eight. Then, um, I guess in future years, maybe rotate out, but. Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, then, well, right, Wagner in there. The next one is the Boone River Watershed Authority, uh, I've been on there with Galen.
I'm in the watershed, so I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll take his place there.
And the next one's juvenile detention board.
So, well, uh. Back to that one, Roger, are you the, the. Main person for that?
And I, we, Casey and I just.
We did it together, okay.
We didn't really say.
I didn't know if you guys wanted to be, you know, primary or alternate.
No, I I just assumed that we just be.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is.
We don't have a primary or secondary on it.
Yeah.
If that's fine with you, Carter.
Yeah, yeah, that works for me.
Unless you wanna be the primary, I don't really care.
You know, if you want.
So juvenile detention, Kyle, you wanna keep that one?
Yep, no, I'm enjoying that one.
I've been the alternate. Forever.
It's a good group, as you said previously too.
Yeah, I was there for quite a few years and I enjoyed it. Care Connections of Northern Iowa.
I would be interested in this one, I've had a couple of people approach me about being on the board.
Okay, Carter, you got it. That's Wagner. Decat Board.
I guess I'm not real familiar with the decap.
Can you explain what that is? I I know I asked one time, but trying to remember.
I've never had anything to do with it.
I don't know a lot about it, I know with Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, we are the fiscal agent for quite a few decat areas. I think it has to do with some grant funding and stuff like that, I don't I don't know much on specifics for their programs or anything like that. I couldn't help you much there.
Yeah, they get money from the state, they they do stuff, they give some money to like care team and uh, things like that.
Yeah, I know they have, but I don't know much information about them.
Well, I I forgot to ask, does anybody wanna be the alternate for the Care Connection Board other than me?
You wanna get an education?
Do you wanna be the alternate? I think it's a really important job.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be alternate.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a good one to learn on, that's
Yeah.
Got a lot of
It'd be good.
Lot moving pieces.
Where are those meetings held?
Typically Emmitsburg, aren't they?
Okay.
Decat Board, I don't.
Is that a monthly or quarterly or?
It's quarterly.
I was thinking it's quarterly or bimonthly, but I'm not sure.
And you said
I don't think it's everyone.
Deals with the care team?
Well, they get they get state money and then they 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 take the money and they do, they do grants for that, they do, they give like care teams some money, they do some sort of go passes, they do some.
Would that be something that might benefit Carter if he's part of the Care Connections?
Yeah.
Could be part of that.
Yeah.
That's that's fine, I can I can be on that.
Mental health.
Yeah.
That's where I was.
Um.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think. Uh, I've been doing nine one one stuff with Donnie, I think if that's all right with the rest of the board, I'll do the nine one one.
I I was actually interested in.
Are you?
Well, we need an alternate and.
Yeah.
So I could I could be the delegate if you would be okay with being an alternate.
When we switch it for one year and let you be alternate, cuz there's a lot of stuff to learn on.
Is it? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be the delegate and then next year we'll switch. If that's all right with you.
No, that's fine, that works.
Early childhood development, Jack, you're still gonna do that?
Yeah, chairman.
Yeah. Emergency Management Commission, I've been doing some of that.
Um, I'm actually open for that one as well.
Are you? Do you wanna be the alternate and then let's work that out so that you can take it over?
There's.
Well, there wasn't an alternate before.
There and Donnie was on that previously.
Yeah, I kind of promised Chris, Carissa, I'd do it for a year. He's.
But that could be a good one, one too, I don't.
Yeah, why don't you help me out? That's what I did with Donnie, sector.
Just kind of partner on it and then.
Yeah, we'll partner on it.
I don't know, sometime, like even on workforce development, I didn't really learn from anyone, it was just kind of put your feet in the fire and learn as you go and I I appreciate that way of doing it as well, because you're kind, you're kind, you're kind of forced to
Yeah.
get get busy, so I wouldn't be scared either way, but.
You got EMS advisory board. You were on the original one, right?
Yeah, I was on the original.
I've been on it lately. I'll do it one year and then I won't. Patient.
Okay.
ICAP, Jack?
Yep.
Captain Advisory Board. I think.
What is that?
Uh, it's defunct right now, we haven't brought it back to life since.
Since emergency planning.
Yeah.
This is emergency preparedness team.
Right. We've done nothing for the last year since COVID. So I don't know if we wanna just scratch it or we'll just leave it there and leave it.
Yeah, leave it there.
Yeah, got mental health, our county board of health.
Board of Health, yeah.
I'm the chairman of that too.
We got economic development, I got enough jobs, who wants to do economic development?
That's that's the one that I think would work well with workforce.
Well, and you said you wanted to alternate that?
Either, yeah, either way.
I could be the delegate for that one. And then we could go together and that way we can, I can kind of.
You wanna be the delegate?
Yeah, oh.
That would work.
And then Kyle, you're the alternate?
Yeah, yep.
Waste management, Jack?
Yep.
Who wants to be the alternate waste manager?
Would I be, I I would say I could do that, but is that a conflict of interest? I'm I'm on the Waste Management Committee for the city.
Yeah, I don't think you can represent it.
You can't do it twice.
Probably not.
Yeah, so I can't do that one then.
Josh, you wanna do that? Donnie's on there right now, you'd be the, you could be the alternate.
How often do those?
That's just a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't there, isn't there one big one for budget and then?
Every February.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and put me on that.
Yeah.
As alternate.
Who wants the the alternate for NICO?
I I could do that.
Sure. North Central Regional Response Commission Delegate.
Roger, you're listed as the alternate, would you like to step up to be the delegated and then I could possibly serve as alternate for that?
Actually, we already appointed Roger as the delegate.
Okay, yeah.
So we can't change that, he's already been approved by the board to do that.
For the North Central Regional.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was, yeah.
Yeah, so we need an alternate for NICO, but then the other one.
Yeah, yeah, Carter's gonna be the alternate for NICO.
Yeah.
And then we need North Central Response Commission Delegate. Donnie's been.
That's the one I was, that's what I was talking about, so.
So Wagner, you wanna do that?
Well, I was, did you wanna do the delegate and then I could be the alternate for that one?
We can do that for a year and then we'll switch.
Okay.
Remember that. North Iowa Community Action Organization. Anybody really wanna learn how to learn about North Iowa Community Action?
I I could, I could maybe volunteer for that one, if if you're really wanting to get off.
Well, I've been there quite a while.
Maybe they're, maybe they're too used to, you know?
That's the problem, I I think, when you start understanding some of these, it's time to get off of them. Transportation Policy Board Delegate.
That's, and Donnie's, Donnie was a delegate, I was the alternate, but there was only one meeting on that in the last four years, so I I don't know a lot about it. Donnie went to the one meeting, but um I think, is that tied in with?
NICO?
NICO also, I believe.
I think.
But I think it's.
Go together.
Yeah, I think it's very rare they do anything.
Yeah.
I would, I would kind of tie that in with NICO and match that up.
I think.
If you guys are good with that.
Yeah, I think actually we should move that up right with NICO and have the same person be the delegate to both because they work together.
Yeah, delegate and alternate together.
Yeah, do those two.
So I so I would say Roger and then we got Carter for alternate on that, or who do we have?
We haven't anybody yet.
No, for NICO.
For the NICO.
For NICO.
Yeah, so if we're gonna mirror that, then.
So yeah, I I would say do the same thing there.
Take the delegate position there.
How good?
I I don't know if it makes much difference, I, there's probably a slim chance they'll meet at all.
Yeah.
That's for the Transportation Policy Board.
Okay.
There was only one meeting in the last four years.
Yeah.
Uh, I think they should just be moved up and kind of married together.
Yeah, I would say they should be tied and work work as a unit, cuz I'm pretty sure it's through NICO.
So then Carter's be the the alternate and then we have Workforce Development Board.
Yeah.
And now you've been there forever.
Yep.
You're gonna keep doing it?
Yeah, I enjoy that one and currently Leo of our region, but we're in the whole process of merging and stuff. We got a lot of things in the works right now with the state trying to comply with everything, so that's pretty big transition there.
Now we have to appoint the Wellness Committee Member. Uh, let's go back and go through all these motions for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just taking the speed one much.
Yeah, what were we doing for emergency management? There was talk between.
We're gonna partner on it.
We're gonna partner on it.
So both of us will basically be delegates.
Yeah, that's what I kind of did with Donnie.
Sure.
And that, it's kind of important for two people to know what's going on with emergency managing, while we bought that building, we did a lot of stuff. I guess last year it was a busy job.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, I would make the motion to approve the committees as discussed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Stecker, any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Or compared unanimous? Point Wellness Committee Member, who wants to be wellness?
Who was on that before? Well, that was, that was, that was Galen's, okay, that's right.
Wellness and Safety, both of the next two ones.
Usually safety is the change.
Wasn't he safety?
No, wasn't he?
Oh, yeah, you were safety, that's right.
Yeah.
Wellness?
Did you, did you want me to do wellness or?
Uh, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
I will move that Carter would be the uh, committee member for the wellness program, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wagner, any discussion? All in those favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Post. Uh, next one is appoint Safety Committee Member, which is usually the chairman, do I have a motion to that effect?
So.
Last second by Stecker.
Carter was saying.
Good.
You take that.
Hearing done, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post, motion carried unanimous, discussion with, are we up to that already?
Yeah.
Discussion with County Auditor.
Okay, so I am leaving Saturday for California, I'll be gone a week. So next week you guys will have either Krista or Melissa here in the boardroom. There is not much on the agenda for next week, actually hard to do anything except for what we discussed today. So it shouldn't be a, hopefully won't be a busy meeting.
Don't have too much, Dan.
Yeah, um, I'm swamped trying to get everything done, including budgets that we have tomorrow and everything else that's going on, so I'll be working late the rest of this week trying to get everything done before we leave on Saturday. So, uh, just wanted to let you know that tomorrow for budget workshops, um, we are not going to, none of the department heads are gonna be talking to you about wages because of the new union that's coming up, it didn't, doesn't do us any good to uh, talk about that tomorrow if uh they are gonna be bargaining, so tomorrow it will be just everything besides wages except for those departments that it doesn't affect like G I S, urgency management, that kind of stuff, so, but otherwise those departments having employees directly under them, uh, they will not be talking to you about salaries.
Did the times change at all on that or those pretty well set?
Um, I have to add Roger Fisher, and I have not heard anything done yet, so I don't know, unless he did something over the weekend, I haven't heard anything yet today, so otherwise yes.
It's as far as the budget, we can do everything with wages.
That's what I thought too, and that's what we're expecting to do, and then after we know more about the bargaining unit, then we can go back and address that uh, in February.
But that's only what do we got, nine employees maybe?
Oh, there's quite a bit more than what you think, so Ron will, so I have three there and then I have Brittany.
Right.
And then the
Nick's got two.
The two new ones. And Adele.
Nick Nick would have more than two.
He's got two on his side and three on the other.
Well, one of this is a deputy.
Yeah.
And Tommy is deputy.
And downstairs.
What?
Both downstairs in the.
Driver license.
Yeah. On the attorney's office.
And it's two.
Lisa, I don't know if she, where she.
She's on there.
She's in the secondary road department one, I believe.
Yeah, she's never, we never did go to that. And you got the two of her. But as far as drivers, they only, you know, is only, we can do all his budget except guessing they work.
Well, they don't have a union there, so the sheriff's office, so he doesn't own. But they're not a percentage of his wage.
No.
So he's gonna wait to and see what the bargaining committee does, so he kind of has an idea where to go.
But are his deputies gonna come in and bargain with us? Who's gonna sit there where you just?
Well, that's what I think Roger, waiting to see what this bargaining does before.
So we're gonna end up doing the budget and then coming back and adjusting wages after you get back and after the bargaining unit comes in here.
But it's gotta be done by middle February because Republicans will be by March.
Yeah.
I don't.
That'll make for an interesting timeline.
Yeah.
Well, they can bargain all they want.
It's still our decision, but.
So and Jack's gonna be gone three weeks. Is when do you leave, Jack? The sixteenth?
Sixteenth. Have they give any indication what they want?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
I doubt it.
But I don't know that.
Well, they're not a great unit, so.
They're bargaining.
They're bargaining units, so they really don't have the same rules in the union, though.
I thought it was pretty much the same, but I don't know much about it. So, um, there's that, I have to send an email out to everybody, if anybody's leasing anything, we have to list that separately for the gas fee. Uh, this one is gonna be coming in January and February to start our audit, so we're looking at those items. Yeah, there's just a lot. Yeah, there's just a lot.
Start of the year.
City budgets will start coming in soon. So that's about all that I have. I will have my phone with me while I'm in California. Please text me. Anything, before I send me.
Enjoy it.
Well, this is just a letter from the. The school, the department here, deputies and secondary really. But he didn't list everybody.
So that's, that's what we talked about. They'll have to redo all that.
Yeah.
To list everyone specifically.
Any committee reports? We went through all that once today.
Yeah.
Anything else for today?
Um, just tonight, as I said, the five year meeting at six o'clock. I heard that. I haven't heard that they changed it if I find out that they do because the weather, I like.
That sounds good.
Um.
I know it's supposed to, the doctor's supposed to drive, I mean, it's supposed to pick up, so that may change travel conditions for later.
Okay.
Wasn't quite how I envisioned my first board meeting, but, uh. But just wanted to say I look forward to working with you all in the next few years and, and, uh, if I. Make it through today, I mean, I feel fine just other my voice. You know, would, do you want me to come in tomorrow or would you prefer I wait till Thursday or?
As long as you don't have a fever and. And don't have COVID, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Up to you. It's concerned if you're feeling up to it.
Yeah.
Bring a cup. You might pass out.
Right away.
Oh.
So you take a nap?
There's a couch in the back.
A hard table on the other side of the room, if you wanted to lay down on that, I'm sure it would be comfortable.
To, uh, the department's ever budget interview.
Most of them do. I don't have dogs. Uh.
That's not a good one.
I think I had everybody else's. I have, I'm still working. On. Carissa's, because I have a couple of things I have to break out for her because of. The way her friends want.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I have, so just working on.
I've heard word faster.
Yeah.
Same way with. Conservation.
Otherwise, I think I have everybody's been. I have. Thinking about everything, so I'm just looking. And when Dex comes, so hopefully. That's today.
Sounds good.
And if we go over two percent, we still have to have a public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing because.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter anymore.
Two percent is a super majority vote.
Yeah. So, yeah. We have to have a hearing no matter what, so. Yeah, you just have to have that. So that's it.
Anything else come for the good pursuit down? If not, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
They'll move.
I'm motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion care, we are.
It's through your first meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Half hours.
Hopefully we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Rest.
Take care, Carter.
Take care.
Yep, thanks.
The year.
What's that?
Usually we're on. Till noon.
Josh, how do I grab this off the side?
So you just gotta move the mouse over and then look up there, because then you'll see your mouse moving.
And then drag it?
Yep, drag it back to the left. There you go. Yeah, you could have just unplugged that and it would have zipped everything back into your screen anyways.
Yeah.